Stand and get up. We're in the first row. Thank you. Can I add some comments to this? Is there?
Yes, City Commissioner.
Yes, City Commissioner. Right beside the Commissioner. And so with the same reason as we have a number of similar place and affirmations and presentations this evening, and we look at the agenda for those who are interested, we will move up the topic like presentation to the first item under Afro Citizen Comment. So that, because I know a number of you have come particularly for that. First of all, it is my honor to, as we are supposed to do, and there are three former mayors in the room this evening, so it's an honor to have you all here. I'm the President of the Council of the Mayors to issue affirmations. So tonight, this is one. As the Oregon City Library Association founded and opened the Oregon City Reading Room on December thirteenth, nineteen oh nine, on the third floor of the Masonic Temple, it has, in nineteen ten, obviously, a set of students to build the library with a central library talk. The expanding Oregon City Library. It has, since nineteen oh nine, library staff assumed the community and people of Oregon City to make their information and entertainment needs. And it has libraries who improve the quality of life in the community, open a vital center of learning, communication, culture, and enjoyment. And it has libraries that help citizens by enabling individuals to make informed decisions about their self-governance by promoting unrestricted access to information and that serving as community centers for lifelong learning. And it has, Oregon City has been reserved by its public library, which continues to make Oregon City a better place to live. Now therefore, I, Alice Norris, me and the city of Oregon City do proclaim January twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten, as the Oregon City Library's one-hundredth birthday celebration. I encourage all residents to take advantage of library resources and take part in the many activities planned to commemorate the library's one-hundredth birthday. So done. In our studio first, this is a very important one, and we have the Friends of the Oregon City Library here to give us their annual report. So please introduce yourselves and continue. Thank you for your service. We will then have her be present as the Friends of the Library.
Very sure. That's correct, and many other things I don't know.
It's for sure. We've had some wonderful things happen with the Friends and lots of wonderful things happen with the library, and we really have lots of things to celebrate this year, and we're looking forward to having more things to celebrate in the near future. With having the Library Director and having the library just across, we've been just so excited and moving forward, and it's, it's a long time of being so much stable and moving on. We've had so many things going on with us, and so, a while ago, we moved from our small space into a medium space, and in November, we moved into a much larger space in our Friends' bookstore, Fabian Pose. And so we're so excited because it's been doing well, and we have a collaboration with the Tri- Rivers Artist Guild, and we've been using more and more people to get the bookstore. There've been more and more volunteers involved, the hours have been longer, and very, very good, and we've been getting more donations, and we've also been selling more books, and our personal leveling ability to help support the library and its endeavors. Also, again this year, I think the third year, we've been going to the farmer's market every Saturday, and we made a very nice profit, and because we're not really charging a non-profit, we also donated back to the farmer's market to help support their work. And so it's nice to see all the people there, encourage them to bring in books and donations to the bookstore, and we're really excited about that. One of the things we also did at the booth at the farmer's market, and we did a few other places in town, which was in Paterson Park, and we coordinated dozens since over the summer with distribute information on Friends of the Library. And hopefully, we've gotten some new people, and we've gotten people more aware of what's going on in the library, and the fact that last July, our hours increased, a lot of people were surprised when I said that we were thanking them for voting in support of the library's district. The library continued to support programming, especially children's programs and cultural passes. A margin right goes with the library district passing, we don't need to support as much, and so hopefully that we're going to be able to, be able to make a nice contribution once you build us our new library. And we're just waiting, we're excited. And we're also looking very much forward to the Centennial Celebration. A whole year of, of one hundred years ago, things went on, and I think that maybe that morning can tell us more and more about those celebrations, and I would be glad to be finished. Our new library, our, our new library director. Thank you both for all your volunteer service, and the new library, if you haven't been to the new bookstore, it is just a wonderful place to be.
I know what you mean by "not so new." Does that mean "so old"?
Oh gosh. Four months old, that's my age.
Are you? Glad that the library has a bookstore, and it says it has a library director.
I am so, so happy to be the choice. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to seamlessly promote a couple of library events, starting with the Oregon City one-hundredth anniversary celebration, which, as you said in your proclamation, will start next Monday morning at ten-thirty, and everybody is invited to the library to enjoy birthday cake, music, speech from our lovely mayor, and-
Cut it down to forty-five minutes, though, so okay.
Have as long as you want. And some fan gifts from the library to show our appreciation. And then later in the week, we will also have a fundraising kickoff, a very mellow fundraising kickoff from the foundation and the Friends, which will also include music and a little bit of information about how you can support the foundation and the Friends if you're interested. And then on Saturday of the same week, we will have a primary expert for the kids and interested parents and adults to say what life would really like about a hundred years ago, and that will definitely be a hands-on expert to come in, and that should be a lot of fun. Later that day, they will also be celebrating William Stafford's anniversary with a poetry event. So please pick up a brochure, they're in the back, and please join us next week, starting on Monday. And then a video that we're gonna have is, we're doing the Community Wide Read right now, which is called Food for Thoughts, and we have a very clever little logo with a plate and the fork and the knife are backwards, which is, which is thinking. And the book we have chosen this year is "Cousin" by Diana Abijaher. And the event that we are going to have to bring everybody together to talk about this is the evening of February tenth, which is a Wednesday evening, it will be at the Carnegie Center, it will be from six to eight. Now we're supplying some food, it will be Middle Eastern food, because the book is close around a restaurant that serves Middle Eastern food, and we're hoping people will maybe bring a little potluck of their own. We want to have a panel of people who are working in the food group section to get started on some questions, and also, I can put these in the back, we are actually collaborating on this event with English class at Clackamas Community College, and so the professor in that class has come up with a list of questions that the readers can start thinking about to be prepared and enjoy this book a little bit more, so I will put those in the back for people. And that's what's coming up at the Oregon City Public Library.
You're kneeling.
I think many of us know, but maybe some of us don't know who William Stafford is.
Well, the famous poet laureate of Oregon, and he's a very famous poet, his stuff is everywhere, and everyone, the Friends of William Stafford try to encourage as many events as possible, and libraries have famously taken up that charge, and we have events and local, and many libraries locally do too. And what they'll do is, they will have people come in who are poets, and they will read one William Stafford poem and one poem of their own, and then people can join in as well. So it's really fun if you like poetry.
And thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We are, I believe, still waiting for the Speaker of the House Day Party, who's going to talk about that coming in the legislative session, he's, I don't see, but he's with us, so we'll move right on to another exciting report from a local community partner, and that is Clackamas Community College. So if Chuck Clemmons would come forward, you're bringing Shelley Perini with you, and and the students, great, to present a report of activity at Clackamas Community College.
And no good up here without Shelley, so.
Will you give your support?
Madam Chair, and Madam City Commissioner, thank you so much for having us here this evening. You know, I've been served on the board, I've been on the board at Clackamas Community College since two thousand and one. I represent Zone Four, which is the greater Oregon City area and part, and a pretty large chunk across the river in West Lynn. Like you, I'm an elected official, got a stamp for election, I get the same amount of pay you get exactly, and matter of fact, with time and a half, I'm re-asked you. I'm a community college product myself, I did an associate's degree at Clark College over in Vancouver, prior to going to Portland State, where every single credit that I had earned at Clark counted through the creativity, I think, of the registrar, and I was being able to, wait a minute, as you point out, you know, I give a ton of credit to the community college concept and the community college services that I personally received, and my serving on board is in part, you know, a little bit of a way to do some payback for, for the great education that I got started there. Our mission is very compatible with your mission. We're heading toward the, the, the people of the college district, and we overlap a lot in how we serve our constituency. We're doing a job, setting a job and pursuing a higher education, our top goal, but in terms of, we fit with many of the goals that you have in your mission. You might find it surprising, and I personally did actually, even being on the board, but that we serve more than thirty-seven thousand students, and thus, you're witnessing monumental increases in our enrollment, we're in double-digit enrollment growth, last count, our enrollment was up almost twenty percent this year compared to the same time last year.
Do you realize that thirty-seven thousand students is more than the population of Oregon City?
Yes, but the question of where our students come from, our college, our county, our metro students, you know, pretty much from all over the York West, and we're the full international students as well. And I'm working quite, and finally, and I won't, you're sitting on board by reading that too, but let's say that the options receive millions of dollars in financial aid, we believe that finance should not be a barrier to achieving an education. Our foundation raises, I'm also a member and step into the foundation board. Our foundation raises between ninety-two million dollars each year from private classes, resources, organizations, and other foundations. But a bunch of the ways of our students go way beyond finance. For example, over the last three years, we've developed, we've increased our services to veterans and military family members. We provide them a job training, vet required line counselors dedicated just to working with veterans, and a veterans' club, and then of course, financial aid support. We also have established over the last year or so, a military family scholarship endowment, provide scholarship support to the families, the service members, and veterans. All of these services are now accessed in a facility at De Jordan Hall on our campus, so we have a physical place where veterans can go, not only veterans, and receive their services right here in Oregon City. And I'm really committed to supporting our veterans, and we appreciate your efforts very much. And Chuck, you want something to add on scholarships and financial aid?
I just asked, just if you could give me one moment to ask you for your support. We know that financial barriers are a major concern for people choosing to go back and obtain a new career or degree, so good news is at Clackamas Community College, we have a very large endowment, and scholarship applications are open now, and they will still open through April first, so please help spread the word that don't let finances be a barrier. Come to us and talk to us about financial aid and scholarships.
And we're looking to develop a major enrollment growth, and a big chunk of that is, you know, has to do with our economy and the fact that we're being flooded with unemployed people seeking assistance and finding jobs and needing retraining. We have a huge surge in enrollment as the people try to retool their careers. Times are tough, and we're committed to helping people back to work and helping our students succeed. The Boston Globe, the New York Times, and the Oregonian recently reported on our Goodyear Shift Welding Program. Now, I don't have, it's past my bedtime that they offer this, so I've never appreciated that check-in, but I'm told that that program is full, and go sit starting your class in the welding department at ten o'clock and go until three in the morning. If you guys would like to go out there and check up on the activities that, you're welcome to. But for persons, you know, screen shift workers and others, this provides a time that you're suitable to their personal, you know, family or work schedules, so that's a very popular course. This is a way of a good way for you doing to grow an economically viable and sustainable community, I'd like to talk about a few of the programs that we offer that we believe can help you accomplish your goal of enhancing Oregon City's economy. The economy is turned toward green technologies in fields like wind and solar energy, renewable fuels, retrofitting old structures to meet new utilization standards, and congratulations, by the way, on this facility, the great job you did here with Lead Certified City Hall, it is absolutely lovely, that fits right in with, you know, what we're doing at the college in terms of our goals for sustainability. No jobs require upgrading existing skills to work in a green economy. We, that's for me to come in. For example, our growing wind energy industry needs hundreds of technicians. Over the next few years, the solars and nannies and turbines that harness the wind to create electricity. Columbia Gorge Community College in the DOWS has developed curriculum to meet the needs of the emerging wind industry, wind energy industry. So we have a partnership with them, our students can get their start at Clackamas and then finish and get their A-A degree at Columbia Gorge College and be prepared to get into that wind energy environment. The US Bureau of Labor also forecasts excellent drop prospects in the utility industry over the next ten years. We have an aging workforce in the utility industry, and nearly half of the nation's utility workers are forecast to retire in the next ten years. So we offer programs to prepare students for jobs in that industry, both for today's type jobs and those that will exist in the future. The utility market is expanding to include, include more green options like wind, solar, hydro, and our Energy and Resource Management Program is endorsed by the utility training lineup that includes both EGE and Pacific Core. So we think we're trending directly for, you know, there'll be a job market for those folks. Health sciences, and here's one where I always say it's geers like me that make health sciences a growth industry, but it really is very good. You know, we're aiming at the areas where there are unemployment opportunities, jobs in nursing and allied health are growing way faster than the statewide average. So we're a partners in the healthcare industry and with Clackamas County, and we've been taking action to meet the region and state's needs for trained healthcare professionals. We have multiple hospitals in the area, and healthcare plays a key role in the economic vitality of the region. Healthcare is now and it will continue to be a source of family wage jobs. The challenge is meeting the needs through quality education and training, and we're here to do that. We offer integration career pathways in health sciences, including clinical lab assistance, demo assistance, medical assistance, radiontology, some of you guys back here, and, you know, some medical technology, and of course, nursing. And nursing, I've mentioned that our nursing students, now they all emerge with a, with a nursing degree, but not a bachelor's. We're doing enrollment with the Oregon Health Sciences University, so our students are automatically eligible to transfer from Clackamas to the Health Sciences University and get a bachelor's degree as well if they so desire. Awesome hall entities, and this is why it's kind of near and dear to my heart, but it allows to have our choir rehearsing in the gym, and in actually an area that was also a hallway, so that people walked and through and front and back of the choir while they were rehearsing. And we had people in notably small cramped and sometimes not adequately air-conditioned or heated classrooms. We finally have moved on to the New American Communication Arts Center, which moved into in two thousand and five, and boy, we went from awful circumstances to really fine circumstances. But it's not only a great teaching facility, but it's also a performance venue that is now becoming a cultural hub for Oregon City and Clackamas County. We have the Osterman Theater, rehearsal rooms, a recording studio, and the Alexander Art Gallery. Now, just, Commissioner Arizona, how many of you have been to an art event at the college?
Considering a play show?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, gentlemen, let's see there. We've got judges today for sure. The other hall entities also are an economic engine, and here's, you know, we have some leadership, and we have a lot of people in the state working to bring, for example, the, the film industry to Oregon, and there are jobs to be had in the film industry, and our new, for example, our new digital multimedia communications degree is designing for students to competitive agent creative services industry. We have several flows of focus, including audio and sound engineering, broadcast journalism, film studies, graphic design, music, sound, multimedia, animation, video production, and web design. We have one classroom now designated and dedicated to the multimedia communities. And on the local front, Shelley here is involved with Mulholland Community of Oregon City to help attract recruiting service providers to the downtown core, and she serves on their Economic Restructuring Committee and has signed up to support our Mulholland Blue Collar Creative Initiative, which I think is great. Horticulture, I'm not touching on several of our programs, I'm just pointing out a few that-
Because we have a meeting coming up a little later.
You're not just a sleeping bag, are you? The Horticulture, we provide quality education and training for the industry and community members. We have wheelhouse landscapes, environmental education, nursery management, which incidentally is a, a big, a big area. We provide practical skills in environmental stewardship. Our Horticulture and Landscape Programs are the only programs funded and owned by the Professional Land Care Network, acronym PLANET. This accreditation provides students with enhanced opportunities to follow their particular landscaping standards. We're also a proud supporter of Clackamas County's small farming community and our many farmers markets. These are more examples of our unique economic mix in Clackamas County and particularly in Oregon City. We're presenting a token grant of this natural asset and industry, and we're here to help. It had a specific impact in a number of ways, and I can really, again, this is now to your handout, but I want you to understand that we have almost six thousand students from Oregon City Beaver Creek area enrolled at Clackamas. We've got sixty-two-
Commander, if you're going to, are you saying while they're high school students or is this after?
No, this is total, it would include high school.
It would include, is it a crime, a law?
That's correct. But it includes all of our, all of our student mix, almost six thousand of them apart from the Oregon City Beaver Creek area. We have sixty-two students who have received tuition scholarships from the foundation for almost, you know, for over eighty-two thousand dollars. We have advanced college credit students from Oregon City High School and Clackamas Middle College earned a total of fifty-two hundred and seventy-two credits, a tuition value of over, you know, almost four hundred thousand dollars. In addition to the individual students, we also work with Oregon City businesses, served by our Small Business Development Center, workshops, classes, personal coaching, and small business assistance. And one of my favorite examples is Stitch and Embroidery, run by Deborah Jones, and she made part of her personal, you know, of course, because I did a tissue for my grandkids and so forth. They're a little tiny small business, never done this before or anything, but they were part of our, part of our business greenhouse class, and that business has grown, and they started out with ten of these automated machines, and they've got fifty of them now, and their business has expanded three times, they provide great employment up there, and it's just a good example. And I haven't been in permission, by the way, because normally we keep these things confidential, but Deborah's so proud of the partnership and the assistance that she's had with the college, she's happy to have us use her as an example. That's success. So as I started, I thought, why don't we do this? Because our students are future, and I brought a little bit of future with me, and this is Sage, and she's going to introduce herself a little bit, and she's one of our prize students up there. So Sage, you have a few comments?
Well, thank you for having me. My name's Sage Lash, and although I'm not originally from Oregon City, I was born and raised in Portland, Oregon, but it's a pleasure to talk to you about how much I love Oregon City and Clackamas Community College. So I graduated from David Douglas High School last June after completing my natural resources career pathway, and I decided to go a different route than many of my other classmates by coming, to moving out to Oregon City with my mom and my family and going to Clackamas Community College instead of Mount Hood. I also just, I like the website, was one of the things that really grabbed me about Clackamas Community College, it's just a lot easier to handle and a lot easier to know how to apply and all the scholarship information and all that stuff, and it just really worked out for me to move out here as well, and I love that. I live in kind of like door moving, right off Highway two thirteen, so I can actually walk right to Clackamas, which is nice. I also love Oregon City because I can ride my bike or walk really anywhere I need, I live right by Hagens, so I just walk the road through, I barely drive when I'm around here, although I do still work in Portland, unfortunately. So actually, I'm on student government as well, as the administrative assistant, but I didn't really know about student government until I took my placing test for CCC. My college is one of the advisors for the ambassadors over there, and he actually administered the test, and it was throwing me out there, everybody telling him about being on student government and student leadership, and so I decided to do it because during my years at David Douglas, I never did any extracurriculars, sports, or clubs or anything, and so I really felt that I had wasted my time at high school, I mean, I'm a graduate apparently, but I really didn't get much more out of it than academics, so I really wanted to start off my college years the right way, make a new group of friends in a totally different place, and be more involved with my school. So I went in for my interview thinking that I was going to become an ambassador going to schools and recruiting high school students to come to Clackamas Community College, and they placed me as an administrative assistant, which assists the president and the vice-president with whatever they need. I also take the meeting minutes, I do the budget, and I also do committees, so making sure that everyone on, or, which means represented every one of our committees on campus. And I love it, so it's been a really great trip for me, and I'm glad that I got that position. And besides me just loving, I mean, I love Clackamas and I love my position there, and being able to fill up my free time between classes with that. ASG has also provided me with opportunities that I wouldn't have had otherwise, like helping out my community with road cleanups, doing blood drives, which is coming out this next week. We're also helping develop my leadership skills and just playing an active role in my education, as well as making my college years defree. Right now, they, my tuition is covered through student government, so I defree for my books and my fees, and so every term I'm getting my financial aid back to help with the expenses and those other school fees that are associated with it. So it's really nice that I can, you know, have this solid foundation and get as many credits as I need to transfer over to Oregon State University, which is what I plan to do, in pursuing my degree in environmental science. So it was, I was really excited when Shelley told me that this was a certified degree building, because my major is environmental science. But I don't exactly know what I'm going to declare when I go to Oregon State University, but one day I hope to work on marine policy and focus on the conservation and preservation of open water sharks, and because they're becoming endangered. One reason of that, if you're interested, is just because they're not as economically valuable as tuna or cod, and they're not as beloved as dolphins, so fish managers and politicians often overlook them, which I have not done. I love sharks, and, you know, it's just one of my goals when I'm older, but wow. But overall, I just really love Oregon City and all the opportunities that have been presented to me, just becoming more independent and learning how to be a great leader on student government. And I know that if this opportunity to talk in front of you all today was presented to me last year, I wouldn't have been able to do it. So thank you for your time, and I hope you just learn a little bit more about me.
So much. Best wishes here in your career.
And I see you at the conference of our course schedule for the winter term, and Sage is on the back cover. So she's got a modeling career, I suspect. And we really forced the invitation to the collaborative event between, you know, between us and the, and the library. We're delighted to do that. And it's just another way, you know, our missions do mesh and complement one another. And we've got creative people in our English department who are delighted to be involved with your library, and so let us reinforce that invitation. With that, I'd like to thank the Commission very much for this time, and if there are any questions, we'd be pleased to try to respond to them. Shelley will take the tough ones.
Great. Any questions, Commissioner Neely?
There are various specialties that the various community colleges do. And is there, is there a modernized way in which throughout the state these are dealt with? The, how did college, you said you didn't go to Mount Hood, for example, and those have a fish, a fish artery program in there? And how, how, how does it determine what kinds of specialties are dealt with over, over the state? Do you know?
That's a very good question. As a matter of fact, if we are, if, for example, we're preparing to offer a new program, then we have to apply to the state. And the state does have a method of sorting to be sure that there isn't unnecessary duplication within geographic areas. Another example, I talked about the horticulture program, for example, as a good, another good example of a lack of duplication. Now, Mount Hood formerly had a horticulture program as well as, as we have one. In a, in a economic problem, Mount Hood communicated with us, said, hey, we're going to pull the plug on our program, they're going to disband it. And you take our students? And the answer was yes. And so we increased our hort program, they turned theirs down. And so there's informal communication as well as the formal course application process or program application process we have to go through to avoid duplication.
Somebody want to watch sharks? I think that's a good amount of time.
Actually, I was just thinking that that's a really good training for going into politics. Thank you for your strong partnership. I so appreciate community colleges because of that flexibility for job workforce training, you know, kind of turning on a dime. That's just a wonderful resource. Thank you. Next, we are still waiting for Speaker Hunt, so we'll move on to citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to us on items that are not currently on the agenda. So we have some speakers, I'll call you in pairs, if you please come up to the microphone. Ooh, could we turn those down just a hair? Over the top. Thank you. When you come to us, come up, introduce yourself by name, and then tell us the city in which you live. If you live out in the county, why just say so? You do not need to give your address if you write legally on your card. So the first speaker is Damon Navy, followed by Bill Daniels. If you both come together, that would be great. I guess it'll be Damon Navy. Hopefully followed by Bill Daniels.
This is the Urban Garden Chair of the CICA. I was asked to give an interview report, so that's basically what I'm here for. But before I do that, I'm going to take this citizen's opportunity moment and ask, why don't we start in the celebration of the library on a Monday at 10:30? How much of the community is going to be able to participate from Sunday at 10:30 when the students and I come in?
Take your comments under advisement.
For the second Monday?
Yeah, for the next, for the 50th, 150th.
That's what's intended.
There are other opportunities.
I just, I'll just go to me this real quick, and I have a copy for you, Nancy, so you don't have to furiously type. One of our commissioners, the past year 2009, saw a reorganization in Citizens Involvement Council. Our full figure-on meeting in 2009 was in January 2009, and we met monthly throughout the year. After association in the new city, we just needed a reactivation of garden neighborhoods for the vital for increasing citizen involvement in the city and meeting the directives of Gold Five. The council's press room was empty, and by December, they adopted Beto Males elected Betty Males as their chair. In fact, we were working with the neighborhoods in Caulfield neighborhood, and by October, this year had reactivated with nobody laws and elected Larry Gilmour and John Dinkell as co-chairs. A patient at the CIC realized that a few active neighborhoods were having attendance issues without a power to motivate them, attendance was dropping precipitously. They helped combat this through the networking made possible with the CIC. We began a speaker exchange with the neighborhoods. School Superintendent Roger Bean releasing, or Police Department of Clackamas Fire just affirmed the guests who are beginning to make the circuit of neighborhood association meetings. It's hoped that these informational guests will help increase regular attendance without the need of a crisis. As we gain our freedom of tenure, we have managed presentations from the city neighborhood commissioners and city staff, knowing that the CIC is a method of getting out the word is growing. After the first year where he has signed and thanks the efforts of Tom Gile, Betty Males, William Gifford, and Chris Taylor at the city, the CIC will continue to grow in effectiveness. What I, I didn't put in this, because, you know, once you're done and you sign that, you always think of it. We wanted to look at a comprehensive communication, say like putting out a neighborhood newsletter that would be like citywide. And essentially, what it came down to is each neighborhood has their own unique way of communicating with their people. Rivercrest walks the neighborhood and hand delivers things. McLaughlin puts out August monthly bulletins as well as being on Facebook and email and several other things. Hilldale and South End mail out annual reminders with, and then a special event reminder. So the river wasn't a comprehensive way we could do it. And what we were working on was trying to see if there was, you know, that everybody knew of all the different ways. McLaughlin is the only one currently on Facebook, but there are a few other neighborhoods saying, oh, that's actually not a bad idea. So networking that the CIC enables is probably one of the best benefits of it is, you know, you don't have isolated neighborhoods or, you know, interior communities who are getting a much broader citywide perspective on things and also for just getting the word out. Like I said, the different speakers that are available and each neighborhood, almost each, every neighborhood's found their own speaker and others sharing them with everybody else. It's been really good.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your service. Is Bill Daniels going to come back in? Okay, then William Gifford.
I'm a mayor and City Commissioner. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And actually, this one fits a little better than Dan, Bill Daniels, is a segue from Damon's. Speaking as, myself speaking as the, as the Secretary of the CIC, I just want to put a little advocacy for the Caulfield Neighborhood Association, one of our newer neighborhood associations, is going to be having their meeting, they meet four times a year, but their next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, the 26th at 7:00 PM, at Oregon City High School, Room B105. And as tagging on again with Damon's comments about the speaker, we are going to be having School District Superintendent Roger Rata and representatives from the Planning Department here from the city, and a couple of other people there. So we've got a full agenda, and we was going to invite all the citizens that live around the, around the high school, which is where the Caulfield Neighborhood Association is, to come out next Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the high school, Room B105. Thank you for your attention.
Bill Daniels just left the building, so that, is there anyone else that's come prepared to speak? Okay, then we'll move into our business agenda. I forgot, because I told you how to speak, that we have another little device up here. Here, we're giving you three minutes to speak, and so you can self-monitor, you can see that your time, and so you can watch that. Next, I think we've looked at the agenda, is there any other agenda items that commissioners need pulled into the agenda or reordered? Seeing as Ben, we will take it in the order, and we will move up the flashing beacon removal now, and we'll take that, take that next. I know that we have received many words from the community and physicians about this, the beacon, and the, I want you to know that the city council certainly has responded to the citizen letters and phone calls and emails and community contacts that you have made with us. And we're, we're delighted to put that beacon back. And I know some of you have come to talk to us a little bit about that, so knowing that that's the direction of the commission, we hope you can keep your comments very, very brief. And I understand actually today that there was a student injured in the area, a King's School student in the darkness of the morning. So if you want to think about your speaking way, we'll be glad to talk about that. Okay, this is, let me put it here, this agenda item is the flashing beacon at South End and Warner Parent Road intersection that was removed during construction. We've had discussion through our advisory committee, the Destination Advisory Council, been discussed at the Neighborhood Association. We have done traffic counts, talked with the police department, and while no statistics exist that cause staff to make a recommendation to replace the beacon, it certainly is a desire of the community to make that a safer intersection. So with that, do we need any other staff presentation, or do you want to citizen comment? Okay, let's just move into citizen comment then. Do you have some for me here? Okay, I have John, John Williams, former Mayor John Williams, and Kyle Layer, if I say it correctly. And former Mayor Don Anderson. Don, on the phone, indicated that you're bothered with petitions from all of the liberal ideas of Oregon City. This is for legislative office, I'm going to keep these petitions because they are the grand beams that represent so much history in the community, both hold a new. So we appreciate your efforts in, in bringing people together. Who's first?
I'm just, I'm a current president of Kinnell Elementary School. And like I was going to say, I appreciate having the opportunity to speak with people there. And as I mentioned before, we do have an excellent proposal that I think brings out how important it is for this beacon to be replaced at the intersection of Warner Parent and South End Road. I am a fellow resident of the Kinnell Elementary School's parenting student organization, and I'm very surprised of this coming back up there, especially because of the much concern for the parents that are not there anymore. I was glad, I was, I was so delighted to hear you take that seriously, just to make sure what happened to the other students who were swept away. The children became, but it was a very serious accident, it could have been much more dangerous if it had been. But while it's started, because the intersection that we're talking about, the beacon was looking really looking for backup, it was at the, it was on the path at the entrance to Kinnell, which is the school in the, that's where the school parking lot, so it hit and got thrown into the air, fortunately, and it landed on his backside. And it was okay, but I think it was much more serious. And nothing related, it's close to the intersection, the intersection is more dangerous than I want. It's, the border is a little bit easier to navigate, but there is a intersection of Warner Parent and South End, so it's a story, just like, we're impressed that we should take the service and think about putting the beacon back.
I'm just, I'm, 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 I'm walking on both sides at that intersection. Fifty yards, 25 on 125, not exactly on the other. But I know it's a second. It's dangerous. And the devil of it is that, I don't know if you folks got up at St. Louis Memorial and went up there, but it's so stupid, it's black. The school just changed their bus route. And the kids on the other road have to walk up and cross that intersection. And they kiss the bus at the store side of the store there. Kind of school kids start at seven thirty. And I think that's when the circuit patrol comes out. And it's, and we've got an open cast. It's a crowded, it's so dark. And the little guys, I don't know if they've got their wedding coats on and, you know, and it's just dangerous. Now, I know that there's some staff has turned that information to you about, and they're not wanting to put it back. But I look at everything they turned in and didn't actually say anything about school zone or school kids crossing that at a certain time. And I would have thrown out of this. And so my recommendation is to put the red light back. And that's what we're here for.
And, is there anything else to say?
You've said it all quite well. Except that the South End Neighborhood Association is...
It gets up to...
I'm sorry. The South End Leadership Association has not only discussed this problem this year, but has been an agenda item over the last 10 or 15 years. In the mid-'90s, we had one of our South West residents who lives through the house was down from that intersection constantly. It was calling us to do something about that corner. So I just want to endorse the fact that as an association, a priority for a long time. And we think it's very important.
Thank you very much.
If you have enough information to make a decision over the line, we have an attorney come up.
Let's, may I have the question discussion or motion for, of the floor, please? Commissioner Neely.
Actually, I'm ahead of my discussion of the motions made. I think since Commissioner Rocky Smith Jr. put forward this to be on the agenda, I think we might invite him to make a motion if he so wishes.
Next, I'm Mike Smith.
Well, I guess before I make a motion, I would ask, I think some of the questions has been answered in our packet with regards to cost. And is this, is this the cost estimates in this email that we were given? What's the attachment five? I don't know if it's listed that way in our... Is that the accurate, is that accurate totals or possibilities? We haven't really discussed, I think the commission has a solution, or we haven't really discussed the different solutions or the different possibilities. So I don't know if that's something we need to discuss or if we're just gonna make a motion to take care of it and then figure out what methods to take care of it later? Or...
Let Nancy Cracher to respond to that either today or later back.
Commissioner Smith, the cost estimates I provided to you in the packet are good cost estimates that were gathered by our operations manager, Nicholas. It does provide a couple of different options. One of which is to install a similar device as was there previously. The second option would be to put solar-powered flashers on top of the stop signs themselves. That's an alternate type of a intersection beacon. And in that case, too, you could consider putting them only on South End Road instead of Warner Parrot. And, but yes, your question, Commissioner Smith, is yes, indeed, these are good cost estimates.
Okay, so do we know where this might come from? Would this be general fund?
It would be up to the city commissioner to decide that.
Could you have a recommendation from which fund would be appropriate?
I'm gonna start that fund, of course, in the first time. You know, in the budget there. So yeah, I think that's where it come from. But again, if you, towards the end of the year, if you have issues there, you'd have to look at the general fund contingency supplement.
Up to maybe, what, 10, well, 11,000. Well, then I guess I'll just move to reinstall or install a new flashing beacon at South End and Warner Millie. It's the same street, yeah, Warner Parrot. I'll put it up at the wrong intersection and then we'll move. And I think I just leave it blank as to where it comes from and we'll deal with that, right?
Yeah, we'll kind. Okay, and moved by Commissioner Smith. Seconded by Commissioner Neely. Further comments or discussion? Seeing none? Is there one? Seeing none? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Hi.
Commissioner Smith?
Hi.
Commissioner Nacida?
Hi.
Commissioner Neely?
Hi.
Mayor Norris?
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor Norris?
Yes, thank you for coming.
Mayor Norris, can I just make one point, please? I just wanted to also thank the community for gathering together and coming up with an opinion on this topic. We won't, we didn't agree. And my job is to make decisions for the city based on engineering practices. And John List is in the same position for public works. Our objective is to provide a safe community and to provide good service in your utilities and your infrastructure. So while the decisions we make may not, as in this case, be particularly popular amongst the community, I want you to know that all of the decisions we make are never with any intent to be at all disrespectful of anybody, and we want to hear your concerns. So thank you for this experience. And we'll get moving on the commission's decision.
Thank you all very much.
I did have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Neely has a response.
One of the, one of the policies here that we had was the notes from the Transportation Advisory Committee. And I have a major concern that I'd like to know. The overwhelming of the Transportation Advisory Committee suggested the city, the Transportation Advisory Committee, be more proactive when trying to control device used as a reward for future so as to attempt to avoid a backlash from residents. A key note suggests that there should be enough issues prior to taking action from us to create problems. A third, a great advice, that if the city doesn't have the public information officer, if you saw the following paper, you're likely to have to be looking for the motionist, rather than just making silent and empty decisions. Residents have greater hash expectations. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have the funding to write all the services the public wants. Your statement is not consistent with the position of some of the members of the Craft and Advisory Committee. And I would strongly suggest that anytime, particularly when you have the holding for a more conservative craft controlled device to a less conservative one, which is what I believe has happened here, that the appropriate number of head of social services stand by at the main comments. It appears that this did not happen. And it appears that at least two of those commissioners and members of the committee seem to be happy that it didn't happen because they didn't want to deal with the resident's emotions. And that bothers me because there's been other incidences like this as well. And I hope, I hope this gets to the Craft and Advisory Committee. I would love to hear what these men say. It's considered a very great deal. Why expect the Craft and Advisory Committee to take as much information from the public than we do?
Any comments? Okay, thank you very much. And let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is slated to be a public hearing for the Renegy Code Amendments, a six-month update. And the action on, the recommended action is that planning staff is asking to hold this over to February 6. It's not coming up on my agenda.
February 17.
February 17, thank you. May I have a motion to do so?
Please.
Seconded by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. On the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Of any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to do that for the 16th. Good luck with that volume of work.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Now, Tony, don't you have a scheduled work session with planning? I just want to make sure I have the dates right to talk about this, February 17.
We do. That's your Tuesday work session in February.
Regular work session?
Yes, I don't have the date with me.
On the February 9?
Yes. We have a joint, yes, we have a joint work session with planning, Christian City Commission to talk about the code amendments that we've been reviewing.
Will you be sending out or will we have the codes to review or what the information that we're gonna be discussing will be online for us to, before the meeting?
So will be.
Other questions? Thank you. Moving into the general business. First item on the business is the right-of-way dedication and sidewalk easement for a lot at the corner of Swan Avenue and Holcomb Boulevard. Instruction, easement right-of-way dedication. Staff on this, is that Nancy Cracher?
Yes, this is a topic that we brought to you for discussion. Gosh, I think it was in November, December, when we were making the decision to award the change order to the contractor on the sidewalks up there to change the design along this stretch of Holcomb Boulevard. And we have been working with the property owner. And this document is the right-of-way dedication for that additional right-of-way that that property owner is providing so that we can make the improvements that would have been, that actually more elaborate than what's being done on the road to Holcomb Boulevard because of the timing of his development. And yet, the timing of his development was delayed because of the economy. So this is the dedication. It was dedicated as it would have been if he was developing the property. And we also are working with him. It's sort of a second thing. It's not directly related to this dedication, but we're also working on an agreement with him. So he would be reimbursing the city for the improvements that he would have been obligated to make that are not part of the Holcomb Boulevard improvements.
Thank you. Are there, are there any questions for staff or a motion? Commissioner Neely.
Right-of-way dedication made. Temporary construction using good laws.
By Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Further comment or discussion? If not, follow those and look at Commissioner West.
I haven't been over there in the daytime, Ms. Cracher, but I was at night. So why is there a two or three-foot gap between the pavement and the curb? It's not a bike lane. Is it gonna be some kind of drainage or...?
Well, it depends on the location. There are some storm drainage trails along the project length. But most likely, that scenario that will be filled in with paving, it'll be the bike lane.
And why does it get left to the end? Why don't you just pave right up to it?
They're not quite ready to pave. They're gonna finish all the sidewalks and all the curb and gutter, and then they'll pave at the very end. And also, the paving weather hasn't been very good.
The Crackamas Heights Open House last night, and oh, the Park Place Neighborhood is so excited about having...
Sidewalks.
...all the way to Holcomb.
Yes, very nice. Long overdue.
We're also able to work with them on the streetlights to make sure that they will be dark skies friendly streetlights.
Talked with Carterstein about that, too. Okay, any further comments? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Hi.
Commissioner Smith?
Hi.
Commissioner Nacida?
Hi.
Commissioner Neely?
Mayor Norris?
Motion passes 5-0. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is that correct? It is. May I have a motion for Dr. ...
Okay.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. I think we have a contest to get out of here by 8:05.
Happy.
Of the consent agenda. Nancy, the vote, please. Commissioner West?
Hi.
Commissioner Smith?
Hi.
Commissioner Nacida?
Hi.
Commissioner Neely?
Mayor Norris? Hi.
Motion passes 5-0. Moving into communications, begin with our senior manager, Mrs. Patterson.
I remember the question, just two quick items. First of all, I just wanted to mention to you that we're holding a community open house on the Carnegie Center Task Force. And that is to be held February 6 from 1 to 4 at the center. And all community members are welcome to attend and provide input to that. There's also gonna be the opportunity to do an online questionnaire that will be up on our website here in a few days. Also, secondly, I want to mention to you, I have the contract from Crackamas County. This is in regards to the Pioneer Center. And again, as you recall, several services we provide there and which we get reimbursed for. The total of the contract is $105 to $250. This is an 18% increase. Again, our constitution is actually managing the programs, providing the building and utilities. These are reimbursements that we get for providing the various services at the center. And if you don't have any objection, I'm gonna sign.
Just about that service contract? Okay, thank you, that's it? All right, thank you. Under the mayor's report, I will reappoint Laura Zentner. Oops, we just pulled it. Laura Zentner, an honor herself to the committee beginning now and ending December 31, 2012.
Three-year appointment?
No, ten, that's three years. Next, I have a couple of committee reports. Nancy Cracher and I both are very active on the J-PAC, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, Metro Committee that deals with federal and state funding. And we're pleased to report that we had our meeting in our district, congressional district five today because, as we mentioned at our last meeting, J-PAC has asked its representatives to break the project list and prioritize it to two. And I'm pleased to announce that, based on Cracher, he was very eloquent today in speaking to our Main Street sidewalk improvement program. And it's the number one project that we're recommending for that district. We don't know it'll stay that way because all of the congressional districts that will come together at J-PAC and the programs will be prioritized that way. But it was a well-approved program. So that's one thing. And then, secondly, at the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, our next meeting is extremely important. We will be making a recommendation to the Metro Council on the urban and rural reserves. So that's a very hot and heavy discussion there. It's an advisory committee, but many mayors in the community as well as other citizens of the region are very involved in that. Do you want to talk about our addition or wait till the retreat, Tony? Can I wait to read on that request? Okay. We have a citizen request for a change and we'll bring that up at the retreat to talk about. It's not currently in our, it's a request for addition to an urban reserve by the Danciers family. I think that, did I miss anything on transportation? Nancy? Oh, that's the standard of the report from the community in which I serve. Do any of you have reports? Commissioner Neely?
Actually, I'm going to have the city manager make my report, but I see it as a liaison to the Willamette Falls Cable Access. And franchise funds from City of Oregon City and from Westland have been used to support the programs there. And no, no charges in contract have actually been advanced by those respective cities. And I would like for the city manager to indicate what the implication is. I know what the implication is, but it's a little one. And therefore, I'll let him go ahead and do it.
I can sue Jared first, though. We're having a world record short meeting this evening. So you just squeezed in under the wire.
I don't have his name in this machine.
Okay.
Neely is correct. I have, and give you a little history again. We both provide funding to Willamette Falls via Cable Access Television. There have some issues, as you know, some discussions taking place, particularly on part of City of Westland. That led to some discussions about moving away from that IGA. We have been, I've been meeting with Chris Jordan, and we've been talking about that issue. We have been talking about making some changes through the arrangement, just see if it could work a little better than it has and maybe make other parties feel more comfortable. I don't think there's been any great discomfort on the part of Oregon City at this point. But, you know, if all parties to that, to do that, would be best. To make changes with that, you do have to give them a notice. Sort of clock starts ticking. And they have, I think it's a year before that would go out of effect. That had to, that notice had to be done prior to the beginning of the year. Neither of us have indicated that to them. So Willamette Falls TV will continue to operate on the same arrangement we had today for the next year. And hopefully during that time, we work through any issues or disagreements that people have on that.
Their clarification is that's through the current... I'm not supposed to do this, so I should take it through June of next year. Okay.
Thank you. Any further, actually, let's, shall we interrupt? And allow people to speak? Where did you go? There you are. Yeah, delighted to have you here. We know that a special session is coming up. And it's, we're very honored that you went to brief us this evening on some of the issues that will be coming for us.
Thanks for talking to me. I was actually kind of disappointed when I walked in to see the buffet that was here last time I was there. Well, mad man, Commissioner Stasko tries to be here. We are really kind of an interesting place in terms of several bills and new laws that we passed last year are really just at the stage where they are getting off. In fact, I just got an email a couple hours ago with the latest information about the Jobs and Transportation Act that we passed, which obviously includes some major funding. As you all know, since the City of Oregon City was a major advocate successfully settled successfully, so, for the, uh, for the Jetta Gallow project on 213. And then we see the Saturday Square, one of the major projects as well. But I think a lot, a lot of folks forget that, uh, the majority of that money is going to be for maintenance and preservation of existing, uh, roads. And I just got the, they probably knows these figures already, but it was, I just saw the latest, uh, the latest two months worth of, um, of data shows that sixty-three million new dollars, I think, I think these are all new additional dollars beyond the regular, uh, gas tax and vehicle preservation fee dollars you used to get, have already been distributed out. Um, Oregon City gets one point one-five percent of that, that's your proportional share, and growing, based on population, um, which added up to about seven hundred and over, over seven hundred and twenty-six thousand for the City of Oregon City. So that's going to be an ongoing, uh, monthly, uh, revenue stream, that's two months worth, but there will be an ongoing monthly revenue stream, or mid-dollar.
So seven hundred and fifty thousand times twelve?
Yes.
Too many breath, and it may be three. I'm sure we can give you the details. It came in two months of checks, but it may be actually three months because we started collecting that, the new fees took effect in October 1st. Uh, we're very, very online in this October, the weight mile taxes are a part of that, and then January, a year from now, the, the, uh, six cent gas tax we pass. So it actually is going to be a three-step step process. But for any, uh, a, a, a strong annual revenue stream, two hundred million dollars total, of which a hundred and fifty million will be going to cities and counties. So, I think we hope that you all will, will churn those out in terms of, of projects. It's obviously a great time, I'm sure you're continuing to see great construction bids on projects. It's a great time to, to look at vulnerable construction bids and take advantage of all the, the very strong workforce that is out there, unfortunately, in a lot of cases, not working right now. But that is, and I think you'll just continue to see the job creation coming out of that. Fortunately, we really, our unemployment really peaked in April or May and has very slowly, gradually been coming down. Uh, we just, but we, I think collectively, we've got a responsibility to state and, and local government at, uh, not just, uh, creating those new funds, but actually making sure they're invested on the, on the ground. We're going to be focusing very much in February session on making sure that the state half of that equation isn't getting pushed out in terms of projects, maintenance and preservation, and modernization. And, uh, would encourage you to do the same. In other terms, uh, in terms of new laws that are in the process of being implemented, uh, the Happy Kids Bill that we passed, which definitely gets framed in the context of talking about the eighty thousand kids that will now have access to health insurance and the thirty-five thousand low-income adults, which is true, that's, I mean, that's a good thing in and of itself. But we do often talk about the, the billion dollars in new federal money we're going to be bringing in, and the three thousand permanent healthcare workforce jobs. Uh, we're trying to put, you know, Mike Norris back to work, he's out, he's out of work right now.
No, we're not. No, it's totally retired.
But, uh, so we've got construction industry jobs and all the transportation work, but a whole healthcare workforce, uh, over three thousand permanent jobs that are going to be the ones who are caring for, uh, all these people that, uh, will now be insured. So that, that's going to be a great job creator as well, and we'll, we'll, again, we'll see those jobs really ramp up over the next, uh, several months. Uh, there, we, the Affordable Housing Package we passed, which again, also took effect October 1st, uh, is really the state's first major investment in affordable housing. A very modest document, recording fee to create a dedicated pot of money to go to rehabbing existing housing and, and building new affordable housing. There's an economic benefit and job creation benefit out as well, but, but also housing benefit. So lots of good things, renewable energy work that's still on, lots, lots of good things on the job creation front. That will very much continue to be our focus during the February session. How do we, uh, exercise a lot of oversight and ramp up and speed up the implementation of those? And I see, I think in a couple cases, you'll see us add on additional job creation components, um, to those. To the degree that the state, there's, obviously, there's certain things that the state can do that will help incentivize and, and partner with the private sector to create jobs and, and create a business-friendly environment. Obviously, to a large degree, what happens in February will be driven by what happens between now and January 46th. Uh, the, the two, uh, the two ballot measures, sixty-six and sixty-seven, are obviously pretty much a fork in the road in terms of where we protect the services, uh, that, that are part of this monument's budget and beyond, uh, or where we make additional cuts. I think a lot of people are still surprised by the fact that we have a four billion dollar hurdle, and that, that we filled half of that, two billion dollars, by making cuts. And you can see those, if you go into Oregon City schools or any schools around the, around the state, you can see the impacts of the cuts we've already made. I don't think any of us want to see the impacts of the additional cuts that would be required if we have to make another seven hundred and fifty million dollars of cuts. We cut two billion dollars, filled some with savings that we built up over the last couple of years, filled some with federal stimulus, and then, um, filled the rest with seven hundred and thirty-three million dollars of new revenue. So it's important, although for every dollar of new taxes in these measures, we cut three dollars in services. That's a pretty good ratio. Some would argue we should have cut less and should have raised more in taxes. Some, obviously, as we've heard on the, on the TV ads, would argue the opposite. Uh, but I, I think that's a fairly reasonable balance, because ultimately, at the end of the day, one of the things that's going to make businesses in Oregon City and throughout our, uh, our community and state successful is keeping the competitive corporate tax rate that we've got, which this measure will continue to do, will go from the third lowest corporate rates in the country to the fifth lowest. Um, but also to have, uh, vibrant schools, to have a public safety system that will protect those businesses, to have a court system that those businesses can actually, uh, protect their rights in, uh, to have a higher ed system that will actually help them train a workforce. Uh, we, we've got to have that kind of public infrastructure that for, for too long we have not had. And these measures certainly will not get us there completely, but they will stop further regression away from where we need to be. February will obviously be very consumed with a massive amount of cuts. We, we've tried to be pretty transparent in terms of what those cuts will look like. Uh, there's no easy way to cut an additional, with the sixteen million dollar budget having cut two billion, to cut an additional seven hundred and fifty million, there's no way to do that that doesn't directly impact kids and seniors and people with disabilities and, and communities. Um, ninety-three percent of the state budget is, is school, health, and public safety. You can't cut seven hundred and fifty million dollars without dramatically impacting all three of those. So I'm actually optimistic, um, that measures will pass, there will be, if, if, if they pass, the, the budget adjustments in February will be very minor. Uh, two budget adjustments I'm aware of that we will have to make, uh, in February, one, were because of the huge number of folks who are unemployed and on foot stamps right now, we've overdone the Department of Human Service budget protections by about thirty-three million dollars, which is only about one percent of the DHS budget, but still a sizable number. Uh, so we will have to plug that hole. And there is one other, oh, the, um, uh, the enrollment in colleges, community colleges, universities is up so dramatically, which is actually a bad occurring in, in a lot of ways. It's happening probably for the wrong reasons, because of the economy, but a lot of people are getting a lot of great workforce training. Um, and so we terribly oversubscribed what was budgeted for, uh, scholarship to tuition assistance. Uh, so there will have to be probably about a, there's probably about a ten million dollar hole there. The February session was really not going to be about, uh, budget adjustments, it's going to be about extending unemployment benefits, it's going to be about doing everything we can to incentivize job creation and do everything we can to make sure that people who've been hammered by this economy have the tools and resources to be able to get through it. I'll stop there. If you have to take any questions or feedback, you may have.
Thank you very much, I just, for Commissioner Neely, so I just want to thank you for, um, championing the transportation, um, bill. Oh, that was, it was just unheard of, because the, the state hadn't invested in transportation for so long. And, and, um, you understood, I think, Oregon City's economic need for that twenty-two million dollars, and we just thank you very much for that, as well as, um, something else. Oh, your advocacy on behalf of the, of our downtown as we looked at the arch bridge rehabilitation. So appreciate your work on both of those fronts particularly. Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, I, I've got a question. In the last few months, we've seen some, some precious discussion about the impact of, of the downturn in the economy, on retirement funds, on PERS in particular, and, uh, like, I know the, the city has taken action based upon projections that existed before this downturn. Are we able to develop any projections at this time of what, uh, what demands are going to be put on the retirement system in the future with this economic downturn and enable us to perhaps do a little forward planning for that at the municipal levels?
Great, good question, and I wish I had a better stock market crystal ball than I do. The, I mean, there's no question if you, I read the projections that folks who operate on are already dated because the market returns have, I mean, the market has significantly recovered toward the end of 2009. People forget that we actually have, I think it's true, we still have the best funded retirement system in the country. If it's not the best, it's one of the top two. If you compare the, the unfunded liability, if you're real one in seven years, we were in some of the worst shape in the country. There were a whole series of revisions made to the PERS system in 2003. Um, many of them were upheld by the courts, some of them were overturned in the legislative action, overreached, uh, and, and broke contractual rights. Uh, and so it pretty much said the legislature and the governor did everything they could in terms of reforming the system. Every new employee that's been hired since 2003 has been hired in, we never refer to it as tier three, but it's basically tier three, a very sustainable retirement system level. Tier two, which was the group of employees for several years before that, are fairly sustainable. The, the challenge is, is the tier one employees. I worked there so many, two a week every week, and, and, I mean, they were retiring, not so much they, I saw some of them were passing away as well, but. The, uh, if you look at the sustainability of tier three, uh, tier three, wacky and really good shape, tier two, definitely, just tier two and tier three employees, it'll, it'll be very strong. But even if you look at tier one, we still have, if you look at the unfunded liability, we've gotten to the place a couple of years ago where we actually had a, a surplus, over a hundred percent, if you look at the, the funded liability. Uh, this has obviously dropped below a hundred percent now. But we still have one of the best systems in the country, um, in terms of, um, being funded. That will, I believe that will get even better as, as we go forward. Um, and we folks have, have pretty much said that we cannot, uh, that, that legislature's done what we could. So I, I, I think a lot of estimates I've seen are really bad in the short term, in terms of what local governments and the state are going to have to pay in, in terms of the percentage increases, but, but become much more sustainable, uh, once we look out past the end of this recession.
Any further questions, uh, the speaker? Thank you very much for taking your time to, uh...
I'll put off the wedding and then we'll get dinner.
We're just going to have a new session. Uh, any further reports from Commissioners? Commissioner Neely?
Just joined, and there, um, one, one of the reports. I think I'll mention very quickly, last night I was invited to a... Well, the Oregon City Local Harvest 2020. Their vision is, uh, to be grown and enjoying a surplus of food in Oregon City. Areas just outside our city limits to grow food for production and consumption locally, and to build food security and, and food sustainability within and outside of the city. Um, everybody's welcome to participate in this group, and a meetup site, I will press along, www dot... Oregon City Local Harvest 2020.
I talked to them today, too. This is, some of the things that they've caught, then jump by the, by the hospital. Um, and, uh, they were looking for a demonstration of land in Oregon City, so I think we may hear more about this, but it's, it's kind of exciting concept with other communities beginning to, to decide that. Any other reports? We are adjourned.